They should always lead them?
No. It's on.
Danielle McKenzie, anytime the Boy Scout comes, they should be the one to lead our pledges.
Oh, I agree.
Do we have one?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, sometimes you just have to point them out. If you want to put my glasses on, can't see across here. Take them off, can't read it.
That's wrong.
Can't read it. I think that's called old age. Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And would the Boy Scout like to lead the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 5th, 2018. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held January 8th, 2018. Item C accept public water, sanitary sewer, and drainage improvements for the following developments. The Waters Edition, Section 1, located north of northeast 27th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. The Edgewater Edition, Section 1, located south of southeast 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane. And Mission Point Apartments, Phase 2, located south of southwest 19th Street and east of I-35. Item D, accept water improvements for the following developments. Gan Retail Center located north of southwest 4th Street and west of Telephone Road. And the Holiday Inn Express in Hampton Inn located north of northwest 5th Street and east of City Avenue. Item E, accept public sewer improvements for the following developments. Shady Creek Lot Splits located north of southeast 34th Street and west of Sunny Lane. And Gentle Dental located north of northwest 12th Street and west of Broadway Avenue. Item F, approve the current employee policies and procedures manual in its entirety with the adoption date of February 20th, 2018, including the renumbering of Appendix F and Attachment 1, Employee Assistance Program, and the renumbering of Appendix E Drug Testing Policy and the renum-- oh, excuse me, and previously adopted on December 4th, 2017. Item G, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $1,712,316.71.
Mid-Tucker.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you please call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider the appointment of Louis Williams to fill the unexpired term of Ward 3 Councilman Terry Cavanagh, who resigned his seat from the city council on December 18th, 2017.
So. Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Thank you both. At this time, item number four is a swearing in of newly elected city council members by Judge Wayne Knox.
Do we need to have a vote?
Oh, we have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote. I'm sorry. Would you call for the vote first?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Got ahead of myself, sorry about that. Item four is swearing in of newly elected city council member by Judge Wayne Knox. Come on down here.
Do you raise your right hand if you have faith in me? I legally, you solemnly swear from--
You solemnly swear.
That I will support a lawful thing--
I will support a lawful thing.
--the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
Who will discharge the duties of my office with care of it--
Discharge the duties of my office with care of it.
That I have not paid or contributed--
That I have not paid or contributed.
Either directly or indirectly--
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing--
Any money or other valuable thing.
To cure my nomination or election or appointment--
To cure my nomination or election or appointment.
Except for necessary proper expenses offered at my law.
Except for necessary proper expenses offered at my law.
And take forward, I legally, you solemnly swear--
You solemnly swear.
--that I will faithfully discharge--
That I will faithfully discharge.
--according to the best of my abilities--
According to the best of my abilities.
--the duties of office as councilman of the City of Milwaukee.
The duties of the office as councilman of the City of Milwaukee.
I'm glad you all--
All right. Item number five is roll call, please.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
All right. Item number six is consider approval of an investment agreement incorporating changes in the city's retirement plan approved at August 7th, 2017, city council meeting. This is from management.
Mayor and council, this is a companion document to the retirement plan that was approved at the January 16th council meeting through an oversight. The investment plan was also put on the agenda, so this is just a cleanup item with the courage of improvement.
Do we have a motion?
We approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, item number seven is receive a presentation from ACOG regarding the proposed light rail transit system through the I-35 corridor.
Mayor and council, John Sharp and Catherine Holmes are here from ACOG to give us an update as far as where the project stands and the creation of the governing body and other information.
Good evening, thanks very much for inviting us in. I think we picked a great night for it with open eyes, but we're okay. It would have been good to catch the train down to city, maybe in a few years' time. We're just going to give you a brief update on what we've been doing. I'm going to give an update of what's happened in the last few years here in central Oklahoma. And Catherine's going to give you more of an overview of what we're doing right now, going forward to create the line today. So really quickly, we do a third year plan for the metro area of the New York community. And one of the things that we're seeing going out into the future is our population employment is growing very fast, but also our traffic is getting worse and worse. And if you ever travel I-35, it's usually clogged up both in the morning and the evening. So one of the things we started doing is looking back in 2005, ways in which we could alleviate some of this congestion. One of the things that they looked at is COPPA, did a study in 2005, looking at fixed guideway studies, looking at ways in which we could move around the metro area and try and alleviate some of the, obviously, some of the congestion that we have. These are some of the ways in which we try and move people around mass transit throughout the country, throughout the world. Commuter rail is something like a heavier train that you see on the top lap. Light rail is something that you see as an example of Denver. The streetcar is something that you see as an example in Oklahoma City. And bus rapid transit is something where it's like a modern bus with Wi-Fi, and it's more of a luxury type bus, to move around and has platforms and things like that. So these are some of the things that you might see in the future. There's been a lot of investment in central Oklahoma already, especially in downtown Oklahoma City. Over 28 million was spent on the hub. And this is the hub, and it's in process of getting upgraded right now. The first streetcar came in very recently. It's not going to be that color, but they're going to move up and down Gaylord and throughout the downtown area. Going to give you a quick look at the, basically, the layout for the streetcar. It's basically have two routes. One route's about 4.7 miles, and the other route's about two miles, and carries through the Bricktown area. What we did from then on was go into the commuter corridor study. This was really looking at the old fixed guideway study and looking at which corridors actually were the best ones to going forward that we could probably do. We also got something called Hasbill 2480, which allowed us to create an RTA, a Regional Transit Authority, and allows us to use a certain footprint that we deem the best footprint for providing service for the area. And I'll quickly jump forward. This is the north corridor, so this is from downtown Oklahoma City up to Edmond. The south corridor is from downtown Oklahoma City through Moore down to Norman. And then the east corridor is from downtown Oklahoma City out through Dale City, Midwest City, and hooking around on the east side of Tinker Air Force Base. This is really important, as it obviously provides access to over 25,000 jobs each day. There's some, I kind of went through some numbers. There's some numbers that we generated based on how much it will cost to do these types of things. We're going to revisit that because this is now drifting like four years ago, so we're going to get some new numbers. But one of the things that we started looking at was creating a task force to take us to the RTA. And six cities in ACOG got together and signed this back in 2015. And it's an MOU for a three-year budget to go forward and do the RTA. And these people here were folks that came down to the Santa Fe and signed it, and there's a guy on this picture that you probably recognize, isn't it? But these are local council people and mayors from the central Oklahoma, and they all basically said, "Let's go forward with this and create the RTA." So now I'm going to kind of hand over to Catherine, and she's going to give you an idea of what's been going on since that time.
Thank you. Good evening, nice to be here. Thanks for having us. So my name's Catherine Holmes, and I'm a consultant at ACOG, brought on board last fall. I have been consulting in the transit arena most of my 35-year career. I'm an attorney by practice, and I have served as general counsel to the Utah Transit Authority as it was creating its rail system. I did all the negotiation for the commuter rail corridors that that system now operates on. I'm in the general counsel of the Washington Metro Transit System in Washington, DC. And I've done a lot of work in between for engineering consulting firms and other entities to help communities like you bring online your bus and rail transit systems. Of all the types of consulting that I do, my very favorite part of what I do is working with communities at exactly the stage that you are in, because, you know, it's really helping you realize a dream and bring, you know, work from plans on a piece of paper to make this come true. So I'm really excited to be working with ACOG and the RTA task force on the task at hand. So let me just tell you what we've been, so I've been taking all the study work that was done previously to try and put it into an actual entity, a legal entity, that can then take the plans and start operating a system. A lot of people, it's helpful for people to understand why you need a regional transit authority. I mean, you have municipal bus systems in some places operating today. You have, you know, COPTA that is providing service for a large portion of the population in central Oklahoma. But there is a requirement, really, at the federal level, that you have a truly regional transit authority to qualify for the federal funds that are discretionary. And the cost of these projects really require federal participation. And so that is why the region is looking at creating a new entity that is truly regional in its scope to be able to participate in the federal program and the discretionary funding. Federal government recognizes that transit is inherently regional. It doesn't, you know, it needs to be able to pass through city and county lines to be effective. It needs to be seamless, and that the best transit is transit that is seamlessly connected throughout the region. So I've been kind of working through the prior work of various task force groups that ACOG had, and we're kind of refreshing all of that prior work that's been done over the last four or five years, and working with the task force to come to some firmer decisions about several of the key issues. The first issue we worked on is setting the district boundary. The district boundary, your legislation, as John pointed out, allows you to set a boundary at either a municipal level or less than the boundary of an existing city or county line. So you actually have the authority to establish your boundary at the voter precinct level. And so we've been looking at that. There was a recommendation that came out of the RTD task force with a certain boundary configuration. And so I took that work, and I had a few comments. One is, it's really important that you align your boundary with the urbanized area. That's important from a federal perspective, and so we've taken a look to see how the boundary lines up with your urbanized area that is recognized by the federal government. The second is to make sure that you're using population and employment assumptions based on a 2040 projection. Some of the earlier work was using 2010 population and employment density numbers. And so I've refreshed kind of the thought around that so that we are anticipating future growth to the extent that it's at least the projections that are included in your current enrollment plan. And you can see, and it's hard from here to see the, what the proposed boundary was, but, well, actually, that's overlaying it. You can see where in the top left, there are sort of west of Edmond. It's pushing outside the border of that blue line. I don't know if there's a, if there's a, anyway. So I'm helping rework the boundary to make sure that it's drawn in a way that is, will capture the anticipated future growth. That's your employment projections at the 2040 level. And so we'll be making some boundary recommendations to make sure that we are capturing all that anticipated future growth. So that's the first thing that we've been doing. And we had a question that came up about, from the tax commission, whether the tax commission would be able to collect tax at a precinct level. I met last time I was here with the tax commission, and they have confirmed that yes, indeed, they can do that. So it is permissible for the communities that want to have their boundary defined at a precinct level. For example, in Norman, it's really not a Moore issue, but in some communities it is, they may be looking at defining their boundary at a precinct level, and the tax commission has authorized, has indicated that that would be appropriate, and they can accommodate that. So that's kind of the first piece that we looked at. We are hoping that the task force will come back and make a decision on that, perhaps as early as tomorrow. The second issue that we've started to really dig into is board representation and selection. How to best portion the board? How should board members be appointed? How will they be able to represent central Oklahoma in a way that's equitable, given the population and sales tax that is generated in various parts of the community? So this was the work that was done by the RTD task force now several years ago. And they came up with a proposal to have nine sub-districts, and there was a process for board members to be selected within each sub-district. And I'm not going to spend too much time going into that, because I'm going to make a recommendation that we adopt a more fluid approach to that selection process, mostly because I think it's really important when you're establishing your regional transit as well, you can create an entity that is durable, that will be flexible over time, and your population's going to shift and grow. And it's not going to grow within the boundaries that you perhaps, it looked like in, you know, in 2010. You know, by 2040, you're going to be in a different, your population's going to shift it. And so I think having less strict and less rigid structures will allow you to adapt more easily. So we're looking at a different model to achieve equitable representation using an approach that is more durable and that can be easily modified on a decennial basis. When you look around to other communities that have regional transit, the most common way of achieving equity among the member cities is to define the number of board representatives that may be appointed by each member. And that's largely a determination of how big you want the board to be. I mean, how, you know, if you've got 15-member communities, how many board members do you want to have on the board? Is it one member, one representative? Or, you know, are you going to cluster some cities together? I mean, how, and largely that is, you know, do you want a 30-person board or an 11-person board? There, the, once you determine how many members you want to have, you achieve some equity in representation by weighting votes. So you may have a tally vote plus a weighted vote. And then finally, you can get even more precise in making sure that you are fairly considering all of the member voices by being very specific about what levels of approval will be required for what types of issues. So for example, you may decide that, you know, we can have a majority vote on the majority of our issues, but we really want our budget to be approved unanimously, or by a supermajority, or, you know, things like that. So I've done some work that I've presented to the task force that kind of looks around the region, and I'm not going to take time to go through them here, but there are lots of options. And what I've been doing is to work with the task force to say, you know, you're really not just like Dallas, or just like Phoenix, or just like, you know, you're really very unique. And so let's create a board and voting protocols that works really for the unique central Oklahoma region. And so that's what we've been, what we've been working on. Tomorrow, I'll be working with the task force to present to them a couple of options of how you might put a board together that would consider, you know, having representation that is representative, that is equitable based on population and sales tax contribution, but then leveling out and getting to regionalism by using these voting protocols, combining perhaps a weighted vote with some other levels of majority unanimous, supermajority procedures that can help achieve that regionalism that we're all, that's really important to have in transit operate in a regional way. A final issue that we'll talk about is what modes will be operated and by whom? When you look around at how other transit systems run their transit, some systems do have all modes under the umbrella. That'll be streetcar and commuter rail and light rail and bus and the RT, and all of that would be under one umbrella. Other places have decided, you know, we're only going to do commuter rail and light rail, and we're going to keep the streetcar outside. That's a separate deal, it's run by the city usually, sometimes with business interests, we're not going to bring that under 10. So, and lots of ways in between. So that'll be a conversation, is how big do you want to be? What do you want to do? What does the region want to do with the existing bus systems? You know, does COPTA come in, or is it on the outside? Those are issues that will be coming up soon. These are some examples of how other cities do it. It's really all over the map. And then when we get through that, which are really kind of key to sort of organizing the governance structure, there are several other steps that will be required to get to actual formation. And John mentioned, it'll be important to refresh the assumptions underlying the technical studies, and some of these are done many years ago. We need to confirm the access arrangements for commuter rail service that would operate in the I-35 corridor. There will be time spent drafting the RTA formation documents, charter and bylaws, the end of useful resolutions. There will be preparing an initial staffing plan and budget and some key policy documents. And then developing some educational information for the public and continuing to do outreach, as we're doing tonight, to stakeholders and constituents here. So that's a hopefully quick enough overview of where we are and what's ahead, and we have a lot going on, and we're really interested to keep you all engaged, appreciate any opportunity to come back and if you have some questions or works is regularly there, and so we look forward to keeping you updated and working with you in the future.
One of the things, I have a couple of questions. One of the things we had talked about, Mayor Norick actually started this process a little while ago. When we first sat down and talked about it, we decided the economic development was more important than the urban development, so to speak, because we have plenty of urban development. And they want to use the rail line that's existing between downtown Oklahoma City to Midwest City, I understand that. And it goes to a base that's closed base. So it's like, there's no shopping on base there, you have to have a purpose. Moore is one of the largest cities, as far as population goes, that work at Tinker. Nobody's going to get in their car and drive downtown Oklahoma City and take a bus or take a train to work at Tinker. They're just not going to do it. You're going to hop on Sutter Road and go four miles up the road, and they'll be there. And what we talked about originally was developing a train line from the airport to downtown to the convention centers to actually pay for that train system. And it's not even in here.
Now, the lines, the three lines, the rows to the top, the three that you see currently, we're going to revisit that again and look at lines to the west, towards UConn, down southwest towards the airport, Mustang. And you're right, I mean, Oklahoma City has invested a lot of money in the convention center and a convention hotel. So if you want those people to come in here, they're going to fly in--
It costs 40 bucks on a taxi to get the airport to downtown.
Exactly. So that's something that we have to look at again, because at the time that this was done a number of years ago, the numbers didn't come up high enough.
Right.
But downtown has changed, the airport's changed, so--
Like I said, if you live in Moore or Norman, you're not going to drive downtown Oklahoma City and get on a train and go back to Tinker.
Right.
You just go right over here to Tinker, it's only five miles.
I recently got a phone call from a guy who owns some property behind here in Old Town and wants to know exactly where the train station's going to be.
That's the other thing, we don't have a train station. Are we going to get one?
Yes, I mean, the idea is, we've got some points on the map, they haven't been locked in, but those points on the map are suggested areas where we can put a station. The RTA, in a sense, will pay for a basic train station at those locations.
Well, that was the other question we had. We don't want to put, as a city of Moore, we don't want to put money into a train that's not going to stop here.
Right.
So we want to guarantee that it's going to stop here first.
Absolutely. But right now, the way it's set up right now is there's one for downtown here and one for 19th Street. The 19th Street was put in there, that might be something that you want to move to another location, but we felt like a downtown, Old Town kind of area, and then maybe 19th Street, but that was put in there.
The other problem we have, if you were to put this to a vote of the people, I can tell you they would not vote for one more train on that track over there.
Right.
We have 28 trains a day stopping traffic on two major intersections. Until we get that fixed, that's not going to happen.
I think you're working with maybe towed up on Forest Street, I think, is one of the options.
We've been working on it for about 10 years.
Yeah.
So about as long as it is.
Yeah.
So it's just, you know, we have to get some things in place here before we can move forward. Anybody else?
Do you all anticipate any impact for self-driving vehicles coming into play by 2040 that would maybe diminish the use of these transit systems?
You know, I, that's not what the, you know, of course, nobody really knows.
Right.
How that's going to work. For fully automated vehicles, though, I think the expectation is that it will complement public transit because it will allow sort of the last mile, right? So a lot of times people are unable to fully utilize a transit system because they can't get from the end of the rail line or the end of the bus line to their job, or their hospital, or their, you know, school. And so really, having a fully automated vehicle fleet available that would be sponsored presumably by the end-of-the-line communities to meet the train or the bus at the end of the line and carry passengers, you know, that last mile is, is where most of the speculation that I've been paying attention to is circulating. It's, you know, and in, in major markets where we have, you know, like New York City, for example, or Los Angeles, New York City is moving to congestion pricing right away, like next year. And they, they're needing to keep cars out of New York City. So the fact that fully automated vehicles are available is not a solution to the, to the problems in major markets. It's not the same issue that you're going to face in Oklahoma City. And so that's why it's, you know, we're really not quite sure what impact of any will have here. They also are really, the current projections I'm seeing on the vehicles that'll be available in 2040 is they're going to cost about $100,000. And so, you know, maybe a couple of people can have them, but it's probably not likely to replace, you know, the bus line or the rail line. It's not going to be practical at that level for a long, long time.
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you guys have put in. I know this is a major project that's been going on for years. And I said, it's, it's gone through Mayor Norick, Mayor Humphries, and, you know, Mayor Cornet, and now we have a new mayor in Oklahoma City. So it's going to be a while before it's finished. And I know things, being fluid as they are, it's going to keep changing. So, but just consider the economic aspect of it because I think, I see that as a potential, not just for Moore, but for Oklahoma City in general, the whole area. If you want to bring people into the metro, you have to get them from the airport to downtown. It's not getting them from downtown, you know, Tinker Air Force Base. That's not going to, that's not going to benefit anybody. If you've ever been downtown, especially by that railroad station, go see if you can park for less than 10 bucks an hour. So, just saying. Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have just, not a question for you, but just for Mayor and Brooke, something that we might, I don't know, might be a good time for us to discuss bus services in the community of Moore. I know we've talked about it three or four times, and we haven't really ever done anything with that. So here, looking at doing a train and all kinds of infrastructure and cost, we already have roads, and we may just need to look at bus stops or see what, what it would, what the cost would be for us to, to work with the, having a bus service in Moore.
Well, if they get the train built, we can buy those buses pretty cheap from Goplin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, but it's a good idea, Mark. We do need to talk about that because people ask more and more about it. As the population gets older, they want to ride the bus.
Well, could, could we maybe consider making that as an agenda item sometime and just, city staff can look and see what that, what the town costs.
I'd be interested in the actual demand of that as well. If we're talking about just bus stops to take more citizens around Moore, what does the demand look like to make sure that any kind of city that looks at price actually benefits the demand?
I think that's a good idea.
You might even have considered it being broader based than that.
I would agree with that.
Extensions into Oklahoma City and things like that.
Yeah.
All right. Item number six is, oh wait, excuse me, we've already done that one. Item number eight is consider approval of ordinance number 87818, amending Part 8, Chapter 11, Article B, Section 8-1111 by establishing regulations and provisions for fence maintenance requirements.
Mayor and Council, in 2003, City Council approved an ordinance that provided a definition of what a dilapidated fence was. And on page 107 of your added packet, there is a listing out of all of the different characteristics. Some of them are missing and broken panels, lean posts being used to keep the fence erect, three or more broken or missing slats within a panel, upright fence posts when no fence panels are erected. This, in 2013, we did an update to the city code, and it inadvertently removed the definition of a dilapidated fence from the code. This, we didn't realize that that had happened, it's just now come to my attention. We are requesting that this be put back in the code. We are requesting it to go into Part 8, Chapter 11, which is the exterior property maintenance code. We feel that that's a better fit for this definition of dilapidated fence. If this is approved, and whenever we get a complaint about a dilapidated fence, we would go and, if it's true, post the property. And this would give the owner 30 days to bring the fence into compliance, after which time, if we don't hear from the owner, then we would be able to issue a citation if we felt it was needed. Obviously, if the owner contacts us, we, we work with them on a timeline that works for them to get the fence fixed. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number nine is consider appointing two members of the City Council to serve on the Old Town Plan Advisory Committee. And Melissa has offered to do it. Who else did you say?
I'll have to do it.
Okay. Anybody else want to be on it, or?
I will.
Okay. So we've got three. So we'll make it three. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of a new job description for the position of IT Security Specialist and approved placement in pay grade 115 of the city's salary table approved by City Council on June 20th, 2016, effective July 1st, 2016.
Mayor and Council, municipalities have become more frequent targets of cyber attacks. In discussion with our IT staff, they've recommended that another position be created at the, more of a, for more of a maintenance position, which this is, so that the existing IT staff can spend more time on the security protocols and to keep up with those. A good example is what happened in Lawton back in August. They were a victim of a cyber attack and, and I spoke with their city manager at the, at the city manager's conference a couple of weeks ago, and they still haven't fully recovered. And so since we are so computer-dependent, I feel like this is, this is something that, that we really need to do and recommend approval.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Thank you, both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, council? Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider awarding bid number 17, or excuse me, 1718-05, Fire Station Number Two on Bid Package Number 3A for polished concrete to MLB LLC in the amount of $5,973 as the lowest and best bidder and approved contract for same.
Mayor and Council, items 11 and 12 are companion items. These are just the latest of the bids that have been accepted for the Fire Station Number Two. We'd recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please? Or do we have a motion in a second? We don't have a motion.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. We do have a motion.
Got it, yes, second.
Thank you.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 12 is consider awarding bid number 171805, Fire Station Number Two on Bid Package Number 8B for aluminum frame entrances and storefronts to Bestwinger Glass in the amount of $47,000 as the lowest and best bidder and approved contract for same.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Okay. Item number 13 is consider approval of an exclusive negotiation agreement between Belmont Development Company LLC and RRC Development LLC for the redevelopment of Southwest 17th Street and Janeway Site.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, Jeff Sagan with the Center for Economic Development Law, who's been the consultant for the city on this project, present this item and answer any questions. Jeff, if you would.
I have one for our city attorney. Is this legal, Randy? Is this legal, in your opinion? Okay.
I'm registered, you agree.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is basically the first of two agreements to actually have the developer on the contract for 17th and Janeway Development Site. It basically sets up a 90-degree, a 90-day negotiation period during which the developer will submit development and programmatic and schematic design plans, through the design review process, and then submit evidence of financing and a financing plan. Based on those submissions, we'll be able to finalize a disposition and development agreement that will set out the terms of the eventual conveyance of the site, the development obligations and schedule for the developer, and the terms of any financial assistance that's going to be provided from the CPGD [spelled phonetically] funds. Basically, unless you all have questions?
I don't even know what you said, but I guess not. I'm not sure.
Well, basically, after the agreement is adopted, the developer will have to submit development plans within 30 days. Those will go through the design review process, which is, there'll be a special design review process in addition to...
How long will this whole thing take?
90 days.
90 days?
Yes.
That's all I need to know.
Within 90 days, and the city has the option to extend that if they desire or if it's needed. But within 90 days, we should have the entire development under contract.
Okay, sounds good.
So is this in preparation for finding the developer and selecting the developer?
We selected the developer, right. The developer was...
Oh, in the article.
Yeah, oh yeah. The developer was selected in December, if you guys remember. This is just the next step in the negotiations, and it's really just obligating the developer to come up with its actual design and finalize its design and financing.
Yeah, I was really concerned.
This is kind of paves the way for understanding what the design looks like and do the money configurations fit.
Does it work?
Yeah, does it work? Is it work? Can it really happen?
Right.
The goal, yeah, the goal is for those two things to be set in stone before the development agreement is established.
Before that, before we sign another agreement, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the developer is here, Corey Farmer with Belmont, if you all have any questions for the [inaudible].
You guys have any questions? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Sorry, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Anybody? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 14 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held February 5th, 2018. Item B, ratify action of the City Council approving the current employee's policies and procedures, procedures manual in its entirety with the adoption date of February 20th, 2018, including the renumbering of Appendix F and Attachment 1 Employee Assistance Program and the renumbering of Appendix E, the drug testing policy previous adopted on December 4th, 2017. Item C, ratify action of the City Council approving an investment agreement incorporating changes to the city's retirement plan approved at the August 7th, 2017 City Council meeting. Item D, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $363,645.70.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 15 is consider approval of a letter to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board requesting placement on the state FY 2018 project priority list and submission of the financial loan application to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board.
Mayor and Council, this has to do with the 34th Street Lift Station. This lift station and the problems associated with it have been discussed for some time. Last summer, the council approved a contract with Eagle Consultants to come and, and study the issue and, and provide alternatives. Satish from Eagle Consultants is here tonight and has a brief presentation for you. We had numerous meetings over the, over the last several months and, and came up with several options. I previously emailed a memo to the Mayor and Council outlining what staff's position on this. Satish will come and give the, the technical part of it. And we think that if it's approved by council, that this will go a long way towards solving that problem. And I have had conversations with OWRB, and financing is available for this project if we choose to go forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, thank you for having me here tonight. I have a quick presentation of some of the options we looked at in looking at the southeast drainage basin. I have a handout, and you probably have a copy of it. The first page is, it says Figure 5-1. It shows the general boundary of the southeast area. Southeast lift station area takes in about 60% of the wastewater flow to the treatment plant from the city of Moore, so it's a, it's a significant watershed. And this particular diagram shows the areas that are already served, the floodplain areas, areas that can be served by, by gravity lines, and also the new developments that are happening. And it shows the lift stations that are already built. So it's got a lot of information and a legend that shows what the different areas, you know, information is contained in this diagram, so. The area that's marked in yellow is an area that has recently, someone has come in to do a subdivision, and we're looking at adding another lift station at that location, so just for three hours. In doing the study, we looked at five different options. So the next page is, says Figure 5-2. It gives you the option of just business as usual, which is where the yellow, where it's marked in yellow is the new lift station that's going to be coming in. In the last few years, since we built this 34th Street Lift Station, that was completed in around 2002, we've added several new lift stations like Joshua Landing, the Belmar Lift Station, and then of course, Cider Farms, which is the subdivision just immediately south of, south of 34th Street, south of the existing 34th Street Lift Station, has a gravity line coming into the lift stations. We've had issues in that subdivision with sewer backups and things like that over the, over the years, because southeast lift station was designed really not to take in gravity flow for the south from it, because everything drains to the south and east in that basin. So this particular option is basically where we're going to rehabilitate the southeast lift station by making it deeper, adding more pumps, adding more capacity, and then we would let development occur as it occurs and let people build lift stations as and when it's needed.[1740.25] it's needed. So that's that option, number one. Option number two is basically constructing a small regional lift station, which will be at the southern tip of our city boundary on Indian Hills Road, west of the Belmar Golf Course, right by the floodplain where it says Regional LS, which is the regional lift station. And then what we would do is we would add gravity lines from the Golf Course, the Belmar Lift Station, and then the Joshua Landing Lift Station, and then what is now Cider Farms with gravity data as well, and drain all of that to a regional lift station, and then pump it to the southeast lift station, and then pump from there and continue with rehabilitation to southeast lift station. That is the option. So it would add approximately seven plus ten thousand, a little over ten thousand feet of gravity sewer, so that we can drain everything from all of the areas to this regional lift station. It'll be a smaller lift station there. And option number three we looked at was a new lift station at the same location where it says the new SE lift station, at the southern tip there, along Indian Hills Road. And we would actually gravity flow from the south, the old, we will call it the old southeast lift station, which is currently the south Thirty-Fourth Street lift station, and expand this lift station and make it bigger, gravity everything from that old lift station to the new lift station with a new thirty-six inch gravity sewer line, drain the Belmar station, drain the Joshua Landing station, and also add a gravity line from Sooner Lake to point in the Joshua Landing collection system, which will then gravity into the southeast lift station. And what this does is this will, we would have to abandon the old southeast lift station at Thirty-Fourth Street, and then this lift station will then connect the force main, the thirty-inch force main will connect into the existing eighteen-inch force mains, and all of this will drain at Thirty-Fourth and Broadway as it's doing now. The next option is to construct a small regional lift station, as in option two, but pump directly to the wastewater treatment plant along Indian Hills Road from the regional lift station here, and then, but continue rehabilitating with the rehabilitation plan for the Thirty-Fourth Street lift station. And again, we'd have to build gravity lines from Joshua's Landing, the Belmar Lift Station, Cider Farms, et cetera. All of those things will still be done, and the regional lift station will then pump directly to the wastewater treatment plant. The fifth alternative that we looked at was to build a brand-new, large lift station, abandon the old southeast lift station at Thirty-Fourth Street, and then do the gravity lines from all of these different areas to drain to this lift station, and then pump directly from that lift station to the wastewater treatment plant along Indian Hills Road. What this does, all of these options with, you know, some of them would, option number one would keep the existing lift stations, would add a number of other lift stations as development occurs, and in the order in which they occur, and whoever owns the land would have to make room for all of that. And it would also increase the requirement for the city to operate and maintain all of these lift stations. The next, we did cost estimates for all of these on a twenty-year, thirty-year, forty-year basis. What I mean by that is we did a capital cost and then computed the O and M, operation maintenance costs for all of the various options in the lift stations, and then brought all those costs to today's dollars and did a present worth analysis using a four percent interest rate and an inflation rate of two percent for O and M costs for personnel, electricity, et cetera, and pumps. So we looked at that and drew a little graph. The horizontal line is the actual capital cost, which is the solid lines, and the dashed lines are the O and M costs. As you can see, the option number five has the lowest capital cost. So over the years, over forty years, you can see the, you know, it starts flattening and it's, you know, the number becomes significant. For instance, at the end of forty years, you'll have about four and a half million dollars in cost, operation maintenance costs in today's dollars versus option number one, which will have over eight point two five million dollars. So, you know, I think in the next page, I have a summary of all these options, which was shown graphically on the other page, where I've listed the capital cost for the various options that we talked about, and the present value of O and M operation maintenance costs at four percent interest rate over a twenty-year period, and also the present value costs. For instance, option number one has a present value cost of fourteen million, and option number five has fifteen million, and the numbers kind of vary all the way from twelve to fifteen million dollars. Now, if you go, again, to forty-year lifecycle costs, they start coming together much closer as a result, because the O and M costs over a longer period of time will actually benefit the larger lift station on the south side, because your operation and maintenance costs are significantly lower than all the other options. So, having done that, we also looked at, not just, on the next page, I have kind of listed a matrix where we looked at a number of different options. For each option, we looked at a number of factors like capital cost, O and M cost, present worth, regulatory compliance, land requirements, odor, et cetera, and then gave them a point system, and then also gave them a weightage up to a hundred percent for each one of these factors. And we saw that option number one with the highest number meaning is the best number, I mean, is the most, the best option, the best, I mean, the highest number means, you know, the range is from zero to ten, and so if you have a larger number, it's the best, it's a better option than a lower number. So, let's say capital cost, for instance, small lift station, option number one gets a value of nine, whereas option number five gets a value of six. And same thing, if you take a look at the operation maintenance costs, we gave the large lift station number five, option number five is nine points versus five for option number one, because it has a much larger, higher operation maintenance cost over the lifecycle of the project. And similarly, we looked at the present worth costs, the regulatory compliance. For instance, the regulatory compliance, we, you know, they're all compliant with the regulatory requirements, and that's why we give them all a ten. Land requirements, the fewer pump stations you have, the lesser land you need. And then initially, you'll have some right-of-way requirements that you'd have to deal with, but then for operation and maintenance purposes, you have to just deal with one area, you only mow one area, so on and so forth. So that's why I think option number five got nine versus the option number one got six points on that. Odor control at the lift station is an issue, because what happens now is the Thirty-Fourth Street lift station now pumps along Thirty-Fourth Street and dumps at Broadway and Thirty-Fourth. And I know the mayor also has brought this up many, many times, when it dumps into that manhole, the box, junction box there, it creates a bunch of odor, because sewage is pretty ripe by the time it gets there, and it releases odors. And in fact, we've taken some steps to contain that odor in the recent past. I think the city council approved the whole project to contain that odor, and hopefully it has helped odor control in that area for now. So odor is a big issue. So having odor to be contained just a single place, like the large lift station, would be much more advantageous than having to contain it multiple places. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, we would also take, option number five will take the wastewater, not only will we contain the odor at the site, a single site, it would then dump into the wastewater treatment plant, which already has odor control systems in place. And so, and this odor control system at the wastewater treatment plant, I'm sure, has been pretty effective from, I don't know if they've had any complaints in the recent past after we built the new plant, but it's been, we've taken very good steps to contain odor at the plant. So this will help us mitigate odor to a great extent. Environmental factors, one of the important issues that I'm concerned about is having a seventy-two inch and a forty-eight inch water line that is laid along Thirty-Fourth Street, and our two eighteen-inch force mains that is existing today also runs parallel to these water lines. And we've had in the past some breaks in that water line, and God forbid, we have another break, it might impact our lines as well. And when we have a water line break, not only will we have water not being available, we'll have sewer service also may be compromised because of the proximity of our lines to those large lines. And so, as a result, those environmental factors are important, that we move this line away from seventy-two inch and the forty-eight inch line and have a completely new route for it. I know it will help us get the sewage directly to the plant without having to have, for it to go to the Thirty-Fourth Street, Thirty-Fort and Broadway, and then gravity into the treatment plant. So from that factor, we feel like we gave it a higher number for the option number five. Public perception, also it got a higher ranking, because it's at the tip of our city limits, and Sunny Lane is generally kind of industrial in that area. You don't have a whole lot of housing additions, other than on the, at Belmar, on the northeast side of that lift station. But when we build this lift station, it's all going to be in one area, and we'll also have some odor control in that area. So we feel like the public perception would be better. Security vulnerability, we also gave it a higher number for the larger, the option number five, because now we don't have to be vulnerable at multiple locations of lift stations, we only have one to deal with. So, having given this assignment and a bated average for, from the percentage that we gave to each one of these factors, the new large southeast lift station with direct force main to wastewater treatment plant got the highest marks, a combined rating, and therefore, we feel like it is the best option to pursue. It also gives you a holistic approach to minimize having too many pump stations in the drainage system. And I also kind of summarized some of the points that were highlighted by our city manager and staff. In developing all of these options, I had a lot of help with from Elizabeth, Robert Stoll, and Stan, and of course, the city manager also. We sat, you know, multiple times, at fifty percent completion, at eighty percent, ninety percent, and discussed these things at the great length, and finally decided that this would be the best option for us to pursue. And what it does is, some of the points that we talked about here is, this hasn't been brought up yet, but there could be opportunities for the city of Moore to help parts of Oklahoma City, and maybe parts of North Norman that could be included in providing service. It could be an additional source of revenue for the city of Moore. And we'll also eliminate the environmental risk by taking the two eighteen-inch force mains that are along Thirty-Fourth Street and have a direct line to the treatment plant along Indian Hills. And O and M cost will be lower for option five for the lifecycle. And at some point, it'll be a wash in terms of, you know, it would be just really, it'll pay for itself in the long run, is how we see it. And then the non-regulatory odor, emergency response times, vulnerability, they're all mitigated under option five. We'll have fewer gizmos and gadgets to maintain, fewer pumps, and everything is going to be at one location. And finally, the cost per thousand gallons is going to be significantly higher for options one, two, three, it's like sixty-one cents for option number five. And then also, under option number four and five, we're going to have the most number of additional living units that can be added for service by developing this option. And so, with that, I'm going to leave it up for any questions that you might have, and we have to answer them. Of course, I've got a copy of the report. Anybody who needs a copy, I'll be happy to make one up.
About what timeline are we talking about for option number five?
You know, we have some right-of-way acquisitions, and that is a concern. I mean, I don't know, I can't put a timeline on that, but I can tell you that we can probably develop the plans in about nine to twelve months at best, and then take that out for bits, right after approval from the DEQ on that. And of course, funding availability, if we get on the priority list at the Water Resources Board, we probably avail the funding to the loan program. I think the interest rates, I think the city manager, Brooks, has probably talked to them, and I think they gave us interest rates of like two point four, two point two six percent, depending on the timeline on the loan, if it's a twenty-year loan or a thirty-year loan. Who's the present rates is what they, we were voting, I think.
I have a question about the loans. How do we plan on paying those backs? With the increase in water going to look like for citizens, or are we going to save enough because we're going to be using this more efficient lift station that we don't foresee an increase?
Well, what this would call for in order to service the loan would be sewer surcharge like we have now with the new sewer plant. So what we would be looking at, depending on the type of loan that we go with, either a twenty-year or a thirty-year, would be around three dollars a month.
That's the bad news. The good news is we get a new sewer lift station.
It'd be a significant cost savings on pumps as well, because the difference is maximum today is the pumps are continuing to last.
So basically, we have no choice, because the government's going to come in and force us to do it anyway. That's just the way it works. I mean, you know, doing this a long time.
And so, even with the savings that that takes into account, the savings, the three dollars would still be?
Yes, what that would, the three dollars would be to service the loan, but the savings with the overhead and maintenance that we would utilize, then that would save us on potential water rate increases that we have with that, and then working with Veolia, the money that we pay them on contract, it would save us with that, because there'd be less maintenance. And so, there's savings throughout the budget and MPWA as we go forward with this. The three dollars, though, that would be, that would be what would be needed, the approximate three dollars to actually service the loan, but we'd realize savings other where in operations.
That they would likely see reflected on their water bill, even if it's invisible, because they wouldn't see the rate increases. That's really what we're talking about, instead of increasing rates to...
Right, right. So it would be, it would be, it would be that much less, we might have to increase rates. I mean, we've got, as you know, we've got the issue with Oklahoma City anyway, because we're tied to their water, because we buy so much of our water from them and their rate structure, and so, you know, we've got those things that we have to work through. But with this, this wouldn't add near as much on top of it if we went this direction.
So the action item tonight to approve going forward with developing plans?
Action item tonight would be to, for authorization to contact the Water Resources Board and actually be listed on their project priority and submit the loan application, and then, again, would come back before council to have final approval.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Okay. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number sixteen is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held February fifth, two thousand eighteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, six cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and it is a consent docket. Would you please call for the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
I'm not sure, I hear you had this one.
Yeah. Item seventeen is roll call. Would you call the roll, please?
Mark Ham.
Here.
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here. Item eighteen is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held January sixth, two thousand eighteen. Do we have a motion and a second?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Second.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Hand.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes. Item nineteen, consider, if deemed appropriate, to accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the More Economic Development Authority.
I nominate Louis Williams.
I'll second that.
Welcome on board.
We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
I'm staying.
Mark Hand.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
And Adam Webb.
Yes. Item twenty, consider approval of the budget supplement at fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen in the amount of two thousand and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen thousand and fifty-six dollars for the pull road project.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, the More Economic Development Authority's two thousand and fourteen sales tax revenue note was passed for the purpose of making certain street improvements and utility projects, and while the major street improvements have been completed, there remain some funds for other qualified projects. We had anticipated using these funds for the pull road project, but because of, we were uncertain of the start date, we did not budget those for fiscal year eighteen. So as this project is now moving forward, we're requesting your approval to appropriate these funds for the pull road project in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand and fifty-six dollars.
And just as a, in addition to Betty's comments, this amount was approved previously by council three or four years ago, but because we weren't sure when the project was actually going to start, it's never been budgeted. So this just cleans that up.
That was my question, if it was in addition to, or, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Hand.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Flair. Oh, sorry, Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
And Adam Webb.
Yes. We'll recess the More Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Let the record reflect that those ten members were here before, are still here. Item number twenty-one is new business. Item A is citizens' forum. Items not on the agenda, I don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B, items from the city council trustees.
I have a couple of notes. There's been a few public meetings recently, and it's always fantastic when city council members show up, so thank you guys for continuing to show up. I know our city staff does a fantastic job. I feel like everyone that's sitting here is always there, so thank you. But this Thursday, there's an Old Town meeting at six-thirty at the station. I know that that group of citizens is very anxious and active to be heard, so feel free to join us there.
What time?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay, thank you.
When you walk in, it'll be to the right. Todd's team has a great sign put up, so it'll be really obvious where it is. And then just a note, I've heard a couple of sad comments about Seventeenth Street, and I know because of the January seventeenth project, it's closed, so to access Plaza Towers, is there any other way besides driving all the way over to Markwell to access Plaza Towers? I don't know, so I'm.
They can use the access off of Fourth Street, nearby what used to be Seven Eleven.
Yeah, so that's the Markwell or whatever it is, Wilson.
And then they can get out anywhere on the west side, you know, we've got access now, we built that bridge box there, west of Plaza Elementary.
So it's just the east side that's.
They can go to Eagle Drive and go to Nineteenth to protect the signal light there at Nineteenth Street.
Okay, that's the other way. Those are the only two things I have.
Okay, anybody else?
Political season is coming up, and I've noticed signs are starting to appear throughout our city. And I know years ago, the city had enacted a sign ordinance, but it proved somewhat difficult to enforce. So what is, Brooks, do we have a, is there a general rule, signs where they can be placed? Do you know, if you need time to look at it, that's fine?
Yeah, I'll need to review it.
Okay.
It's my understanding, I think, we were told that political signs can be in the right-of-way, but other signs, signage can't, so.
Well, we've had issues in the past with them being right next to the curb, and so just like a clarification as to where they can be, but is it made by the utility poles or where? If that's good.
No, you can't put them on a utility pole.
I wouldn't think so, but.
That's illegal.
Yeah.
That's state law.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Okay, anybody else? Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Mayor and council, I'm not anticipating any weather-related problems tomorrow as far as the operations of city hall, but just in case any come up, I'll be sure and contact all of you just to let, just to let you know if we need to have reduced hours for any reason. I'm not anticipating this at this time. That's all I have.
Louis, good to have you here.
Welcome.
Pizza, you gotta buy some pizza.
It's at Mark's house. Okay. Item twenty-three is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, thank you.
Was the second made by Adam?
I made the second.
Mark.
Yeah. We don't count that anywhere, yes.
The second was made by Mark.
I think the, Thunder game's on. Yes, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Hand.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, thanks for coming. I actually made it to it. My own can, I still, because he says.